Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Tonight is a regularly scheduled meeting of Clark County Board of Commissioners for Thursday, July 18th, 2024 at 5:00 p.m. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for prayer? Major Mobley, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, born and preborn.
Lord, we just give you the glory for this beautiful day, Lord. Thank you for watching over us and protecting us. Father, we submit our lives to the rule of the Word and your Word that you gave us to watch over us and protect us when we anchor our hearts in the truth of God's Word. It is the best weapon against the scheme of the enemy to destroy, to kill, and steal from us. God's love will strengthen us and give you the courage to step out in faith, trusting in Him. The deceitful thoughts of the enemy are blocked out, and we are empowered by God's love to bless us and to watch over us and protect us. Lord, we ask too that you watch over our country, Lord, and there be blessings upon it. Give us strength and faith to know that you are in control and watching over us for our state and for our county, so in the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Next up is the approval of the meeting minutes for July 2nd, 2024.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes for July 2nd, 2024.
I'll second.
Motion and a second on the floor to approve the minutes of July 2nd, 2024. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Motion carries three zero. Next up is approval of claims and payroll.
Next payroll order.
I make a motion to approve claims and payroll as presented by the Clark County Auditor.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor to approve claims and payroll as presented by the Clark County Auditor. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries three zero. Next up is the approval of the agenda over any amendments, and if not, entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Motion and a second on the floor to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries three zero. Next up is public comment. Looks like we've got six people signed up for public comment tonight. I'll just remind everybody, I guess our law changed, what, July 1st, and we have to remind everybody that our public comment is guided by our ordinance 15-2017, which is posted by the public sign-in sheet. Public comment is limited to three minutes, and I would just ask that you state your name and address for the record, and your time will start once you finish. First up is Mr. Sean Fosler. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes. Sean Fosler, Business Interest 2720 Old State Road, Hendrickville, Indiana. Thank you. I would like to start today with asking, are any of you paramedics, or any of you EMTs, firefighters, and just because you drive a firefighter's truck doesn't mean you're one. Okay. Why are we not listening to the experts in Clark County when it comes to EMS? With your lack of response, I doubt that any of you have fire or EMS certifications or any history. Mr. Kaufman, you've been in politics in Clark County for a long time, and under your term in Clark County, we have seen EMS failure after EMS failure after EMS failure. Mr. Blumberg, you sat on the EMS Advisory Board. I watch you. It seems that you are disinterested in the topics, and your mind is already set up. I beg and plead for y'all to knock that off. It's not fair to anybody. Jeffersonville Fire Department had to transport a choking child last night. Scott County EMS had to be called in into Hendrickville because there was no trucks. Every night at eight o'clock, guess what happens? We lose trucks from contracted agency. And I hear through the rumor mill that AmeriPro may get mentioned tonight. Why are we going to replace one failed contract EMS provider with another one? AmeriPro cannot keep New Albany City staffed with two trucks. Multiple times a week, Highland Fire and EMS has had to go bail them out, not only in New Albany City, but a small portion of Floyd County that they cover, AmeriPro itself covers. And we know by his history, AmeriPro is AMR, which was yellow, all of which have failed here in Clark County. You see a pattern? Contract EMS, failure. If we're going to do this, we've got a couple of different ways. County-based, fire-based. It's obvious that towns have spoken. Jeffersonville City wants to start their own. Clarksville's looking at their own. Tri-Township's got their own. New Washington's got their own. Why do you not subsidize them? Especially, you know, I'm not picking sides here, Tri-Township, when they're transporting, why aren't they getting some money from the county? Those county residents that they're transporting, they're being provided EMS, which is y'all's responsibility. Like I said, I feel that y'all have done absolutely nothing when it comes to it, except turn your heads. And yes, I have been an adversary to every one of you all setting up there right now. Mr. Kaufman, we talked on Election Day about the truck. You're driving a truck that once belonged to Jameson Hall. Yes, you went through John Jones. Come on. You know the rest of us out here are looking at it going, we know what that means. Do something. Quit sitting on your thumbs. Quit circling the wagons around a failing provider.
Next up is Mark Furnish.
Mark? Mark Furnish, 2508 Forester Road. I'm Fire Chief in Monroe Township Fire Department, been a member for 42 years. I'm here to speak about, in my 42 years, I've never seen the EMS service at the level it's at right now. And it's a broken system. We've seen provider after provider after provider. It's a broken system that can't sustain the way it is. We work with New Chapel EMS. We provide a driver for a squad that stays in Monroe Township, and it's manned from eight to six. That costs me about $42,000 a year, which is just a hair over 10% of my budget. I run on $400,000 a year. So that is a big expense. But the benefit of it is, is when our squad is manned from eight to six, our response time is nine minutes or less for our citizens in our community. When it's not manned from six o'clock till eight the next morning, it's 26 minutes or more. So it has worked. We do have a good partnership with New Chapel and Matt, and I appreciate them working with us. But again, this is just a Band-Aid that we have to come to conclusion. I do sit on the EMS board, and we are trying to find a solution, but I believe this is spiraling out of control faster than we're even going to be able to try to get a grasp on this. So I'm just asking that if there is some subsidy, again, this is supposed to be all rumors, if there's subsidy that's going to be cut, you have New Washington Fire Department, you have Tri-Township, and you have Monroe that has stepped up and trying to help fill the gap. And like I say, I'm losing 10% of my budget, and if we could get a little bit of subsidy back to help that, maybe we could go 24 hours if they had staffing to do that. I'm not opposed to looking into that, but I'm just saying if New Washington, Tri-Township, and myself, or our department are stepping up, it would be nice if there's going to be some subsidy cut, that it doesn't go to an outside agency, that it goes to an agency that's inside the community already, that is there only for the community. We're not there to make a penny. We're not looking for money to do anything but just cover our expenses to provide a service to our community. So, thank you.
Next up is Jason Cochran.
Jason Cochran, 412 South Public, New Washington, Indiana. I've been the chief of the New Washington Fire Department for 10 years. We all know the issues that's been going on. New Washington Fire Department has historically, to go back to a little bit of history, EMS historically has always been a problem for Clark County, especially the rural areas. Low response times, things of that nature. Our department over 20 years ago saw the need to attempt to have an ambulance after fish fries, things of that nature. We bought our first used ambulance. We have partnered with New Chapel and all the other services that have been contracted to assist our community, to provide an adequate service. We have been running into some issues that I would like to bring up to you all. My squads are 2006, well, high mileage. This year alone, they cost me $18,000 for maintenance. Now, we're happy to do that for our community, but my budget's less than Hendrickville's. I'm less than $400,000. I think I was 380 last year. So we're running into financial issues to provide this service. I've done some research, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I could be looking at the wrong place. The American Act, Rescue Act, there's some funding there that I don't know if it's been appropriated yet. May have already been appropriated, I'm not sure. New Washington Fire Department, we would like to ask, if there's available money, we need two new ambulances. We intend on continuing to do our part to help our community. We have for the past 20 years. Our equipment's getting aged. We don't have the money to replace it. I would be more than happy to discuss with anybody our history, our future plan, and things of that nature. I want to make you all aware, our equipment's aged, and we're going to need replacement. So I would like to submit a quote. I don't know if we're proper chain to where to go with that, of squads, for some help to fund it. And if possible, funding from Empire. Currently, we are doing five days a week, ten hour days, three-man crew, one of them has to be an EMT. We don't always get that because when we are funded, we can't always supply that to Empire. So most days we do have it, some days we don't. We're doing our best with what we can come up with. Any assistance from this board, we greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Next up is Kelly Curry.
Kelly Curry, 48, 17th and 18th Street. You know, I sit here not thinking, I come all the time, I think back to history and to the decades or so that I've been involved. And in recent, he mentioned the ARP funds, Record Recovery Plan funds. And I think about the 11 million one year, 11 million next year, you know, the 7.5 given to SARS Rack and the infrastructure, you know, all this development, all this growth that has just been inundated in our county, but yet we don't have the facilities to take care of the people, to take care of the flooding of the employees that are coming. We don't have the land for the residences because solar's moving in, you know. I think about all these things, and I just feel like y'all are not following your comprehensive plan, the smart growth, the taking care of our agriculture, the taking care of our people. You know, our people are number one. I could care less about some of these other things, but when you're dedicating millions to companies coming in here, but not dedicating money to providing the services that we need for safety, basic, public safety, public safety, number one. And after what happened on Saturday, we all need to pull together and try to make sure that we're taking care of the people first, taking care of the citizens here in our county. You know, I'm not concerned about, you know, Medicare coming in, except for the fact they're going to suck our resources. We've got to have renewable energy to supply them because they will only run on renewable energy. There goes our number one priority of the comprehensive plan, which is to protect our rural community. Have y'all been to the Forage Fair so far this week? Fabulous. Beautiful day to go, beautiful day to go today. And I sit there and look at those, all those young farmers, you know, those young kids, what are they going to start showing in the future? Solar panels? You know, we've got public safety issues, we've got resource issues here that we need to address, and we need to make sure that we're providing for the people that are supposed to be moving in here. You know, we're not going to be a bedroom community if we don't have residences. We're not going to be a bedroom community for anyone if we don't have public safety. We need dollars to go to that before we start handing out dollars to businesses. That's all I want to say.
Well said.
Very good.
Well said. Thank you. Next up is Christina Horsley.
Christina Horsley, 22417 Mahan Road, Marysville, Indiana. I'm usually here to talk with you all about industrial solar, but tonight, that's not what's on my mind. Just about three weeks ago, I had an emergency within my own family, and for the first time in my life, I was scared to death for them to have to call the ambulance. My mother called. She was crying. She said she was going to pass out. She was sick, and she didn't know what was going on. And I didn't know what was going on because I was, you know, probably 10 minutes or so away from her. So I know flying over to get to her and call some other family to try to get them to her faster. I get there, we don't know if she's possibly suffered a stroke or what. We called 911 because that's what she said to do. I was getting ready to try to get her in my vehicle and take her to the hospital myself, being concerned about the current New Chapel situation in our community. But she couldn't even get herself up out of bed. She couldn't even move, and she cried when I went to try to help pick her up. New Chapel got there in a reasonable time, and I was panicking the whole time because I wasn't sure, were they going to have all the supplies they needed? Were they going to be able to deal with what was going on with her? No. But like I said, for the first time in my life, I was scared to have to call an ambulance and not to just get my mom in the car myself and try to transport her to the hospital. Now, I've worked with budgets in my job before I retired, and I know there's things in there that we had to cut when there were more important things. You know, for our citizens, it's nice to have places to go out to and recreational, but we've got a lot of parks in Clark County, you know, bigger parks and parks for the children. You know, those things are not as important as taking care of our residents and being able to provide needs for them. The EMS, and like the other day, I know Sean said there was no EMS person on staff for the ambulance.
Paramedic.
Paramedic, thank you. I was like, you know, that's concerning. There was nobody that was going to come out to the aid. If we had somebody on the highway that had a wreck, if we had a child somewhere, and like the other night, a choking child, I can't believe that mother's not here to say enough. You know, these are important things to our community, and like Kelly said, safety is first. I would be the first to say, if there's something us residents can do, fundraisers, whatever, but I know that we pay high taxes in this county because I'm one of them, and those tax dollars need to be going to public safety first and foremost, and trying to hire and retain good qualified people in our county to provide EMS coverage, you know, whatever way it is. But I just wanted to say, for the first time in my life, I was afraid to call an ambulance for my own mother. And something's got to change. Thank you.
Next up is Koi Travis.
Koi Travis, 211 East Market Street in New Albany. I'm the spokesperson for New Chapel EMS. Hearing someone say that they are scared to call 911 when you're the spokesperson for the primary EMS provider is concerning. And it's concerning for a number of reasons, not the least of which is knowing the dedication that our staff have to making sure that that public safety net is there, knowing that the other public safety providers who were here today talk to you about the partnerships that they have with New Chapel to make sure that that safety net is in place. We have tried to be transparent and honest about everything that has happened to this company over the last five months since we had our change in leadership. We've owned when we've made mistakes, and we've owned that we have to learn from those mistakes and do better. Something that I don't know that always gets picked up on, you hear about the bad things, you hear about the fear, you hear about the paranoia. What you don't hear is that New Chapel has had over 12,000 runs in 2024, and over 98% of those runs have had no concerns reported. What you don't hear is, again, we have partnerships with our other public service agencies. What you don't hear is the continued investments we make in training, the continued efforts we have to bring more paramedics, more EMTs to Southern Indiana. A problem that Dr. Yezel and others have identified is not just a Clark County problem, is not just a Southern Indiana problem, it is a nationwide problem. Our other public safety partners who are here today told you they need help with that just as much as New Chapel does. And to hear that our citizens are scared to call 911, when in reality, the safety net is there. We want the public to know they are safe. We want the public to know we care. We want those who have stoked those fears to come to us, talk to us, ask us questions, because we want to be transparent about those concerns. I do want to briefly address the concern about supposedly a child being transported who was choking. That child was stable within four minutes of dispatch. The Fire Department did not transport a choking child, they transported a stable breathing child before EMS even arrived on the scene. And they didn't transport the child to a children's hospital, they transported them to Clark. You heard it, EMS has historically been a problem in Clark County. This is not a new development, and it is something we are committed to continuing to work with all of you to make better, because nobody should be scared to call 911. And we will be a partner with you. That has been our pledge, that will continue to be our pledge. And it is because you have been good partners to us, it is because New Washington and Monroe and Tri-Township have been such good partners to us, we haven't invoiced you for two months. Thank you.
That concludes public comment. Moving on to new business. First up on the agenda is Gavin Hedner, EMA Director. And I know Dr. Yezel was returning on an EMS, from an EMS forum, and I think he was going to try to make it, but probably not going to make it. So Gavin, I think we called you here tonight because we trust in your opinion and we listen to concerns over time, and I think really as a member of the EMS Advisory Board and looking for a recommendation from that board, you know, what is your recommendation?
Currently, New Chapel EMS, they don't have the staff to meet the contract to cover EMS. I recommend that we reach out to other partners to find a solution to cover EMS units and EMS calls in this community, so that our citizens know that when they call 911, they will get an ambulance.
Fair enough, and I don't disagree with you. I think, I think what we're looking for is, from the EMS Advisory Board perspective, we know that it's there for short-term solutions, and it's there for long-term solutions. And sitting in those meetings, it's been more about what I would consider kind of the ordinance that's in place now, and we really haven't had a lot of time to look toward those long-term solutions, it's been more short-term. Does this movement buy us some time to look towards that long-term solution?
I think, in my opinion, what we have in front of us is really three, you know, big goals that we have to get done, three objectives. First is to initially stabilize our county and emergency response. Second is to amend that public safety ordinance, and then third is to figure out how to fund Firebase EMS or another service to adequately cover this community. The, you know, this isn't going to be a short, or this is going to be a quick solution. Many times we're talking about, I think, transitioning to a different, you know, system, something where we, you know, we've heard tonight, we've done it for 40 years, we have private EMS. This is pretty archaic. We want to, you know, stabilize with this short-term solution of finding a provider that can help stabilize the situation now, and then work towards, in the background, to amend the public safety ordinance with the Health Department, EMS Subcommittee, and then a long-term solution for EMS in Clark County.
So I think from our perspective, what I would entertain a motion on is for us to go ahead and allow Gavin, working in conjunction with Dr. Yezel, to look for a provider that can support the existing plan that we have in place now, with the hopes that it gives us time to look towards and work towards that long-term solution. So I would entertain a motion from the Commissioners that we allow Gavin, working with Dr. Yezel in conjunction with EMS Advisory Board, to find that short-term solution and act on it as soon as possible. So that would be my, what I would entertain.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
So there's a motion, a second on the floor, to allow Gavin Hedner, our EMA Director, and Dr. Yezel, our Chief Medical Officer, to work toward finding a very short-term, well, a short-term solution, reaching out to providers that can help stabilize the system we have and take action on that. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries three zero. Thank you, Gavin, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'm assuming we should probably hear something back fairly rapidly?
Yep. Good to work on.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. Next up on the agenda is Assured Partners' Property and Casualty Insurance Renewal.
I'm Steve Blis with Assured Partners. We are the broker for Clark County Government's Property and Casualty Insurance Program. I am a resident of Clark County, residing in Selishburg. Our office is located in Jeffersonville. I'm here tonight seeking approval to renew our upcoming policy year coverage that starts August the 1st, 2024. I have provided each of you with a document that's showing the insurance company's line of coverage and associated annual renewal premiums. A lot of work goes into this process, information gathering, so I'd like to thank all the department heads, office holders, for their help in getting us all the information that we need to work with the carriers to provide the coverage for the county. A special thanks to Sabrina Corbin for coordinating that effort. It does take a lot of time, and we do appreciate all your help.
Awesome. So I think you all have the package that was presented to us from Assured Partners. I would entertain a motion to approve that, and I assume we need to go down to each provider, correct?
Yeah, each insurance company and the line of coverage and the annual premium is listed on the sheet, on the renewal sheet, and make sure the term is from August 1st of 2024 until August 1st of 2025.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the Clark County Government Property and Casualty Renewal premiums from August 1st, 2024 to August 1st, 2025. I'm going to read the insurance companies, and then the coverage, and then the premium. Trident Liability Auto and Umbrella in the amount of $705,006. Chubb, which is property, in the amount of $107,120, I'm sorry, $107,123. IPEP, workers' compensation, $368,784. Indian Harbor, Kenzale, Upland, which is law enforcement liability, in the amount of Beasley, which is cyber liability, in the amount of $13,080. And Travelers, which is crime hall, PNI, in the amount of $14,994.
I'll second your motion.
So there's a motion and a second on the floor to approve the Clark County Government Property and Casualty Renewal premiums that run from August 1st, 2024 to August 1st, 2025. The insurance company of Trident for the coverage of liability auto and umbrella in the amount of $705,006. Chubb for the line of coverage of property, $107,123. IPEP, workers' compensation, for $368,784. Indian Harbor, Kenzale, Upland, for law enforcement liability in the amount of $334,871. Beasley for cyber liability, which is $13,080. And Travelers, which is crime hall slash PNI, for $14,994. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries three zero. Thank you, Steve, appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next up is our Alternative Healthcare Services Agreement.
Yeah, so this is the renewal agreement for the health clinic.
Yeah, so this is the renewal agreement for the health clinic that we have for our eligible employees. The current two-year agreement expires on August 1st. So this is for another two-year term from August 1st to 2024 until August 1st to 2026. You know, the health clinic's been very successful in averting claims from the insurance policy, which saves us money on that policy. So for the new two-year agreement, the first year of this agreement, it will be $68.65 per month for eligible employee. And then year two of this renewal agreement would be, the cost would be $68.65 per month per eligible employee, plus the 5% of redirected claims. And a redirected is a loan to the insurance company, it saves us money on that. So that would be the two-year agreement, Alternative Health Solutions.
I'll make a motion to approve the Care Center Service Agreement entered into on this date by, between Alternative Health Solutions LLC, which is a Kentucky Limited Liability Company, and Clark County, Indiana Government. In the amount of first year, $68.65 per month per eligible employee, and the second year of $68.65 per month per eligible employee for the period of time of August 1st, 2024 through August 1st of 2026.
I'll second.
So a motion and a second on the floor to approve the agreement between Care Center Services and Clark County Government with a term of August 1st, 2024 to August 1st, 2026, with first year being $68.65 per.
Employee.
Per eligible employee. Per eligible employee, $68.65 for the second year. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries three zero. Next up is our BMS Annual Section 125 Plan and FSA.
Yeah, so BMS is the administrator of the Section 125 Plan and Flexible Spending Accounts under our benefit plan for the employees. So this is the annual agreement that runs from August 1st to 2024. Actually, I take that back, they're trying to get on the same calendar year since our insurance used to be August 1st to August 1st, but now that we're on a calendar year, January 1st. So this would be, the renewal plan year will be from August 1st of 2024 until the end of this calendar year, 12/31/2024. And then next year, then there'll be a one-year plan to match the health insurance plan. So the administrative fees are the same as the current, there's no change in that. This is just me and us positioned to have a one-year plan next year.
Got you.
So same as what we're paying now.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the BMS Annual Renewal Form, Section 125 Plan and Flexible Spending Accounts from August 1st, 24 to 12/31/24.
I'll second.
So there's a motion and a second on the floor to approve the BMS Annual Renewal Form, Section 125 Plan and Flexible Spending Accounts for the renewal plan year of August 1st, 2024 to 12/31/2024. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries three zero. Next up is the Clark County Problem Solving Court Opioid Unrestricted Funds Request.
Good evening.
Good evening Judge.
Judge Lees, I'm the Presiding Judge of the Clark Circuit Courts. And we are here tonight. We had come to the Commissioners in 2023, early 2023, maybe April, and in response to the opioid settlement money, had come with a request regarding trying to give appropriation or some of the funds from that opioid settlement money for our problem solving courts. At the time, we weren't sure if there was any money left that had been appropriated or allocated to the different organizations. And I, we had heard that there was still some money left that had not been allocated. So we wanted to see if the Commissioners would consider allocating a portion of those funds to the problem solving courts. And last year, we had a letter of support from Dr. Yezel that was also provided to the Council, and I think that was for May of last year where the County Health Department was on board for the problem solving courts to also be a participant in the money. But we never heard anything. I don't know, I was not Presiding Judge at this time, so I don't know if Judge Carmichael had learned something or heard something from the Commissioners, but we never got any yea or nay either way. So when we heard that there was some money left, we thought, well, we're going to come back and try to see. Now that, I think there's been a shift or a change since last year regarding the perception of our problem solving courts. I know that many of you attended the Indiana Supreme Court Breakfast that we did to kick off the Problem Solving Court Month in May. And I also know many of you have attended some of our Problem Solving Court graduations. And I also know that, that some of you also have known individuals that have been participants in our problem solving courts that didn't realize that they were receiving services from us and that these were people that were spoken very highly of. So with that, I wanted to see if the Commissioners would consider allocating any money that might be left over to our problem solving courts. I believe we did submit a proposal narrative of how we would intend to spend the money for incentives, drug testing, contract services, and different operations for the problem solving court that do qualify under the statute regarding the use of these funds.
Do you have a total amount?
A total, no, and I'll be honest with you.
I think what I counted was 111,000.
And I printed the one out that, I printed the one from September 11th of 2023, so I did not print the most recent one that we sent. And it may not be any different. It may be the same.
This is in also Clark County probation, Clark County Attorney Corrections, the Veterans Corps.
Yes, this is, so what we're trying to do is, we have so many problem solving courts now, and so we're trying to make a collaborative effort. And we are establishing a umbrella Problem Solving Court Board. So this request actually comes from our Problem Solving Court Board that we have formally, that we are formally establishing so that we have one voice for all of our problem solving courts, so we don't have to do everything piecemeal anymore, that we can come to you as a unified board and let you know what's going on with our problem solving courts and if we have any needs to come to you as one unit versus a veteran treatment court board or a drug court, impact court, mental health court. We found that it's just more efficient if we kind of bind together and come to you as one.
Is this, is this an annual request?
I think right now, the request is as it stands. I did take a look at what the projected amount of money for Clark County that would come through over the next, through 2038. So I imagine that every year, when we learn that that money is being distributed, that we would come to you with probably very similar requests. We do try to get as much money and funding as we can through grants. And I know our drug court, CCATS, does have, has had grant funding federally. I believe our family recovery court has also had some federal funding. Our other courts have been relying only on state funding. And so I would imagine that the request would be very similar from year to year based on the amount of money that the county gets.
Yeah. And see, it varies, it varies from year to year too. So the Attorney General, who handled the case on behalf of all the local governments, you know, they have a projection, but their estimates, so they change from year to year. So I think when the initial request came in last year or the year before, Judge, that was like year one of the initial request. And we had already allocated almost the entirety of that initial request, other people had their requests before you.
Right.
So that's why.
Yeah, we can take a lay.
Yeah, so now, now the last couple of years, there's been more money that's been moving into unrestricted, excuse me, into restricted funds in pursuant to the settlement agreement that the Attorney General entered into. There are certain uses that the restricted funds can be used for. So it looks like all of these comply with the, with the list of what they call the remediation, the allowed remediation uses that comes from the Attorney General. So right now, since the original request, there is money for this request. So obviously, I understand this is not, we can't commit to ongoing because we don't know exactly from year to year exactly how much money will be distributed from that.
But I guess my question is, is this, the request, as it's written here, is for unrestricted?
No, for restricted.
No, it says unrestricted.
It says unrestricted, and I guess my question was, is if these qualify for the restricted funds, are they going to use it for restricted?
Yeah, that must have been a typo because their request is for the restricted funds.
It's for the restricted funds.
Okay, yeah, so I think that the unrestricted funds are not as much as the restricted funds. The restricted funds are specifically for these type of treatment versus unrestricted funds.
And we have no preference, which comes from, that may be.
Well, the unrestricted funds is small, see, the unrestricted funds is a smaller amount.
Right, and I have the projections through 2023.
The restricted funds is the larger portion of that settlement, and the restricted funds are specifically for, with the opioid remediation uses and its related situations such as that, that, so this is a drug court, and it would make more sense to use the restricted and the unrestricted.
And we have no problem with that, whatever the requirements are for the spending, we're used to, we've got grants and our money has to be used in specific ways or we use that funding, so that is not an issue. Whichever it would come from, we would make sure that they are only used for, if it's the restricted portion, we would make sure that the money is only used for the purposes acceptable under the statute for the restricted portion.
It exceeds this, this dollar amount.
Yeah.
And I think we were not knowing what may have been left, so we tried to be very reasonable in what we requested, and obviously, if there's not that much, then we understand that, you know, you can't commit to something that you didn't receive.
Well, I think, I think what I would prefer to do is use the restricted funds, obviously, because it pertains to this, to a T. And then the unrestricted funds gives you a little bit more flexibility as to where it's applied too.
Right.
I don't know what that balance is on the unrestricted funds. I think that's.
Sabrina says she believes there may be 700, at least 700,000 in the restricted funds.
I, that's what I don't know. I guess what you could do, if the Commissioners wish, you could make a motion to approve the request and pull it out of a mix of the restricted, unrestricted funds, if that's your wish. I'm just trying to figure out, we would prefer.
I believe the restricted funds, because that's specifically what this is for, because it ties the hands of the unrestricted.
But my point is that there's not enough funding in the restricted funds, and you want to fund this in totality, you can pull some from the unrestricted funds, is what I'm saying. Anyway, so.
I would prefer that we only pull it from one fund, that way we're setting that precedence, we know where it's coming from out of one fund and everything. What, I didn't.
I think it's 111,000.
The total I come up with is 111.
And I apologize, I totally pulled the wrong.
Well, on the last page is an $11,000 ask, the other ones are in $10,000 increments, and that's 11,000, that's where I come up with the odd number.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve to the Clark County Problem Solving Board approval of the use of opioid settlement of restricted funds in the amount of 111,000 dollars.
I'll second.
So there's a motion and a second on the floor to approve the request from the Clark County Problem Solving Board in the amount of 111,000 dollars from the opioid abatement and restricted funds. Is that correct?
Yes.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries three zero.
Thank you very much.
If you don't mind, I think we'd be kind of curious to kind of get some sort of report, kind of see how this is moving along, because I know we've attended graduations and things like that, but as it moves along, it'd be interesting to see how the money's really being helped.
Yeah, we have to do some very detailed reporting regarding our expenditures for the grant money anyway, so I am happy to provide a, maybe a quarterly reporting on how the money is spent.
And I don't even, I guess it's really not that, it's really, if the money is used, is it, is it successful? You know, what's, what's our, how are we going to judge that and, and really kind of see what's successful, not successful, but just like to see these restricted funds being used and whether it's successful, and I'm sure you can provide that, so.
Well, and I can tell you this, at our last Problem Solving Court Board meeting, we discussed bringing in some of our success stories, the actual individuals that have been through the program, have already completed it, and where they are now, whether it be six months later, a year later, three years later. And so our different problem solving courts have already reached out, and I think we've probably got a nice group of people that will be starting to attend the movie, the meetings, just to, just to let, yeah, I wish it was a movie, just to let you know that, hey, this, this worked for us and this made a difference in our lives.
I agree.
So yeah, absolutely, I'm happy to do that.
All right, thanks Judge, appreciate it.
You're very welcome. And I think I'm the next one also.
You are. Next up is an ordinance establishing the Court Interpreter Grant Fund, which is ordinance number 13-2024.
Yes, and this one, we give grant money for our interpreter services, and I think there's already a fund number, 9109, that the grant money has come into, and so I guess we just need to make sure we've been awarded another grant for interpreters. I believe we received $7,000, and I think we just need the approval from the Commissioners.
Well, that, we've told that we're establishing a fund. The fund has happened to create it, yeah, so we're establishing the 9109.
The 9109, okay. I have the number.
Yeah, that's what we're approving. I think the grant, it's in your package, is $7,000.
Yeah, we asked for a lot more, and unfortunately, we did not give it.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 13-2024, the ordinance establishing the Court Interpreter Grant Fund with a fund number being 9109 and $7,000 going into that.
Second.
So there's a motion and a second on the floor to approve ordinance number 13-2024, which is an ordinance establishing the Court Interpreter Grant Fund with a fund number of 9109. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries three zero.
Thank you, awesome, good to see you.
Thanks Judge. Next up is an ordinance establishing the Landfill Bonds Proceed Fund, and this is ordinance number 14-2024.
Yeah, so as you know, we're going through the process of doing the supplemental bond to finish the barrier wall, the slurry wall project at the landfill. So this is ordinance, just to create the fund number 4804 for the receipt of those revenue bonds and then for the dispersment of those funds to complete the project at the landfill.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 14-2024, the ordinance establishing a non-reverting fund for the deposit of bond proceeds funds and for the dispersment of costs related to the Clark Floyd landfill barrier and slurry wall project with the fund number being 4804.
I will second.
So the motion and a second on the floor to approve ordinance number 14-2024, which is an ordinance establishing a non-reverting fund for the deposit of bond proceeds funds and for the dispersment of costs related to the Clark Floyd landfill barrier and slurry wall project with a fund number of 4804. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries three zero. Next up is the EMB LLC Contract with Bridge Number 400.
Yes, as you know, you all at a prior meeting awarded EMB paving LLC, they were a low bidder on the Willinger Lane Bridge Number 400 replacement project. So this has been after you ordered the band, this is the actual agreement to enter into, and they were the low bidder, amount of $1,385,262.
Make a motion to approve the agreement between EMB paving and Clark County Board Commissioners for the paving of Bridge Number 400 versus the Willinger, or the replacement of the bridge at 400 at Willinger Lane over Mill Creek in the amount of $1,385,000. And what's the rest of that?
262.
262.
I'll second.
So there's a motion and a second on the floor to approve the agreement between Clark County Board of Commissioners and EMB paving for the construction of. and E and B paving for the construction of Bridge four hundred, which is a Willinger Lane over Mill Creek Bridge in the amount of one million, three hundred eighty five thousand, two hundred sixty two dollars to come out of Kuhn Bridge. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries three zero. Do we have, I know it's two hundred and ten days that they have a notice to proceed. Is that, do we have a time that they're going to start working on that?
I'm still waiting for the water line to be relocated before I give them the initiation to start. I will tell them after we get this thing that water line is supposed to be out by the middle of this month. So we should be about done, but I don't have.
So we're thinking maybe September first, we should be moving forward. What's the construction timeline?
Two hundred and ten, it's about March, April, somewhere in there.
Seems like it's been a long time since, it's taken a long time. It's all been, it's all been utility movement, the whole year. Okay. All right, next up is the American Structure Point Professional Services Contract. And I think we.
Yes, I think there's a question about the scope and the cost of this particular contract. I think what we're going to do is request for revisions of the scope and the price. Because I think this particular contract is, it's for the full blown project, and we're not exactly sure of what needs to be done. So I think what we're talking about is requesting them to submit a smaller revised scope for more of a preliminary review of the situation with the less, with the lower cost. So I think we're going to table this and ask them to submit a revised agreement.
Okay, so I make a motion to table American Structure Point Professional Services Contract.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor to table the Professional Services Contract with American Structure Point. Any more discussion?
I do have a question. Who's going to contact Structure Point? Do you want me to? Do you want Scott to?
Well, I mean, you were the one that first spoke with him about that.
I just want to make sure, I just want to understand what the scope is that you want me to tell them to do.
I think the scope is, is that we originally talked about the fact that they were going to do some core samples and find out exactly what the problem was, number one, and number two, what a good solution would be. And that's really kind of what the scope would be. I think it's just core drilling and finding out what we're dealing with.
Right now, yes, and that's what I explained in the memo that I sent out, that that was what they were going to do. But that's fine, I'll just make sure. I just want to make sure we're covering everything.
That was way beyond the scope.
Yeah.
Okay. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Next up is the Pioneer Environmental and Engineering LLC contract for landfill service ditch design plans and testing.
Yes, so as you know, this is related to one of the component parts of the barrier and slurry wall project at the landfill. So this is for professional services, engineering services, for the service ditch design plans and materials requalifications, testing for that component project. And the cost of this particular agreement is in the amount of twenty one thousand dollars to provide those services.
I make a motion then to approve the contract between Pioneer Environmental and Engineering for services for the contract for landfill service ditch design plans and testing in the amount of twenty one thousand dollars.
I'll second.
So there's a motion and a second on the floor to approve the Professional Services Agreement between Clark County and Pioneer Environmental and Engineering Services for the landfill service ditch design plans and testing in the amount of twenty one thousand dollars. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries three zero. That is all of our new business, any other old business? Moving on to reports, Mr. Otter, do you have anything tonight?
Nothing, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Attorney.
Hi, nothing for tonight.
Highway Department, nothing else. Okay. Major Mobley?
Yes, sir, just in judgment, the Clark County jail population, as of today, it's four hundred and thirty eight total inmates. Thirty nine, thirty nine of those being federal inmates, that's all, sir.
And is our seating, is our bed capacity, what, is it?
It's, it's well above five fifty, but there's been times that.
I think we were told the other day, what was it, seven forty nine? Does that make?
Five fifty comfortably, but like, you know, we're way younger where we're at.
Okay.
Close to seven hundred.
Well, we were, we were discussing that because our insurance rate is based on the fact of the capacity. And we were saying, we're never at capacity.
Right.
I didn't realize the capacity was at seven fifty, because five twenty, five thirty is about the highest number we've heard, somewhere in there. So, okay, all right, thank you, appreciate it. Any other elected officials or department heads? Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Yezel?
Yeah, I may, just wanted to.
You can come up here.
I apologize, my Mr. Director head hurts, I was coming in on two wheels from this end. Just wanted to report out on EMS, and I know some of that's probably redundant from what, what he said earlier, but I think I have the gist of what was discussed and agree with it. You know, to be honest, we've given New Chapel an opportunity to show that they can meet the needs of the services in Clark County since they've had some of their legal issues. And, you know, along with that, we developed some contingency plans along the way so that if there was an immediate interruption or a short, you know, a shorter term interruption or even over time, having issues that we were prepared. As things have moved forward, you know, we began to see some issues. We had some concerns in early June when they lost a significant amount of their workforce to an Albany Township fire. And began to look at, at ways we could flex up coverage as needed. You know, what our concern was, they were able to cover in short term, but over that timeframe, it just wasn't sustainable workforce. They were working long shifts, things like that. And you're starting to see some of those holes in that coverage over time. We had that period last week where there wasn't a paramedic available. There's some issues even recently. So I do think, you know, we're, it's come to the point where we're simply asking for service that they can't provide. You know, there's no immediate fix for that, that I have a feeling that over the next few days to weeks, we'll see similar situations. And that's why I kind of want to reiterate what Director Edner said, that, you know, I think we do need to look at some ways to guarantee our county has ALS, paramedic level coverage, twenty four seven, you know, if we move forward. And I know some of those are going to be short-term fixes. I do also think we need to look at helping some of our local providers continue to flex up their service delivery for a longer, more stability type picture as well. So I just want to make sure there's any opportunity for, you know, any questions, concerns, or anything moving forward. And just wanted to make sure we're completely transparent on what our thoughts are.
No, and I appreciate you, I know you were trying to make it.
I'm sorry.
And I spoke to Gavin earlier and told him that you may be able to hear me here, but I appreciate your comments and we appreciate your leadership and guidance on this. And thank you, sir, we're just, as I'm sure Gavin told you, we're looking for that feedback as soon as possible. We need to plug the holes, as you said, and get some medical services, so.
I appreciate your support all through this as we work our way through it.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. Appreciate you getting here.
No problem.
All right, any other business? Seeing none, entertaining motion to adjourn. There's a motion and a second on the floor to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You're adjourned, thank you all very much.